Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for September 12th, 2022. Can we have the roll?
Greg Strick.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Scott Pulis.
Here.
Jeff Ron.
Here.
Randy Eber is excused. You have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. Next item are the minutes from Monday, August 8th, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve? A move by Commissioner Ron, seconded by Commissioner Pulis. Any objection? Seeing none and hearing none, that motion passes. Next item are disclosures. Commissioner Pulis?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Strick?
Yes, in the matter of the two resolutions up for approval under the consent agenda, I will be abstaining as I was not present.
Thank you, Commissioner Strick. Commissioner Spinelli?
Yes, I will also abstain from the consent agenda as I was not present.
Commissioner Ron?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Winchester?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Krishna?
No disclosures.
And no disclosures for myself. Moving on to the consent agenda, two resolutions for approval. Is there a motion to approve? Move by Commissioner Pulis, seconded by Commissioner Ron. Any objection? Seeing none and hearing none, that motion passes. And I guess before we move on to the public hearing items, we do have on our agenda an appearance request. And I guess a quick question to staff. Do you know if the individual is available and interested in going before all the public hearings, if that's an option?
Mr. Chair, I appreciate you accommodating the change in the agenda, but I do not see the individual present at this time.
Okay, we will move on to the public hearing items. Before we do that, I will read the procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meetings. After the staff presentation is completed, on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, will receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the assembly which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. The first public hearing item on the agenda is case 2022-0087. Is there a report from staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a major site plan review for Articorp LLC in accordance with the special limitations imposed on the district via Assembly Ordinance 2021-79. The applicant is proposing to repurpose an existing 20,000-square-foot building, which was formerly an amusement establishment, into a new self-storage facility. The petition site is approximately 5.6 acres and is located northeast of the intersection of Debar Road in Beaver Place in northeast Anchorage. In addition to renovating the existing building, several conexes will be moved on-site in orderly fashion to be used as storage units. The planning department has evaluated the application and presents the following findings for the commission's consideration this evening. For approval criteria number one, we do believe that criteria has been met. The subject parcel was previously subdivided in 2021 via plat 2021-103. The proposed site plan does not conflict with this underlying plat. And to preserve the residential capacity of the site, special limitations were placed upon this B1B zoning district in 2021 through Assembly Ordinance to require the reservation of an area equal to or greater than two acres for the development of no less than 28 residential dwelling units. In addition, a major site plan review was required prior to the issuance of a land use permit for any non-residential structure. An area equal to two acres has been reserved on-site for the future development of 28 residential dwelling units, and no permanent structures will be placed within this area at this time. For approval criteria two, we do believe that there is no conflict with the zoning district standards in Chapter 4 of Title 21. We did see one conflict with the use-specific standards in Chapter 5 for a self-storage facility, and that was just in relation to the location of the screening fence. It was shown exterior to the required landscaping, and it needs to be placed interior of the required landscaping, and this is addressed in Condition Number Eight of the staff packet. We did not see any conflict with the dimensional standards of Chapter 6 of Title 21, with conflicts with Chapter 7. We did see a few discrepancies in the site plan. There were two site plans provided in the application, so it was just a bit confusing as to what the exact parking calculation was, as well as we did not see a loading berth shown on the site plan, and accessible route was not identified in the site plan. Those concerns are addressed in Condition Number Seven of the staff packet. For approval criteria number three, we do believe that criteria is met. The site plan has been developed in a manner to minimize impacts to surrounding properties. This is achieved by adequately screening site operations with both fencing and landscaping, as well as minimizing disturbance to neighboring residential properties by placing conexes along the perimeter to act as a noise barrier. Visual disruption will be reduced through the use of neutral exterior color palette for all structures. Outdoor storage is prohibited, thus all materials will be stored within enclosed structures. Other anticipated impacts, such as odor and excessive vehicular traffic, are believed to be minimal and will be managed accordingly by the site operator. Staff from the Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities has provided comments expressing concern with the orientation of the existing driveway access to Debar Road, and this matter should be resolved with AKDOT and PF to ensure safe and functional site access is provided, and that's addressed in Condition Number Six of the staff packet. For approval criteria number four, we do believe that criteria is met, and the subject parcel is classified as neighborhood center with residential mixed-use overlay within the Acres 2040 land use plan, land use plan map. The proposed self-storage facility will be placed at the rear of the lot, leaving the required two acres reserved for residential near the front of the parcel. Developing the parcel in this manner is consistent with the desired aesthetic of the neighborhood center. And the development is also consistent with the following goals and policies of applicable comprehensive plans. And for Anchorage 2020, that would be Policy 10 and Policy 49. For Anchorage 2040, that would be Land Use Policy 1.2, Goal 2, and Land Use Policy 4.2. And with that, the department does recommend approval of the major site plan review with the conditions 1 through 8, as shown on Page 11 of the staff packet. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Mr. Strick?
Yeah, a quick question here. On Page 4 of the staff packet, gross floor area limitations, we talk about the amount of square footage, 10,000. This area is just slightly more than 10,000, but the conclusion at the end is this standard is not applicable to the proposed use. Can you just clarify for me again why that statement is applicable here?
Sure. Through the chair, Commissioner Strick, so that is a district-specific standard, and it refers to the size of the structure and the level of review required based upon the size of the structure. That specific requirement here, 5,000 to 20,000 square feet, may be requested through an administrative site plan review. A major site plan review is a higher level of review, so therefore it's a more restrictive requirement that we placed upon them through the special limitations than what is required by the district-specific standards in code.
So we raised the standard, so the minimal standard is not applicable, and that's what it states here. Is that solely because this is about approximately 46 square feet bigger than the minimum? Or, yeah, minimum?
Through the chair, it's because the special limitations imposed on the property require major site plan review for any non-residential structures.
Thank you. Quick question for staff, and the applicant may be able to speak to this as well, but looking at the advisory comment number two there, the location within the flood hazard district, I realize that's not, and those regulations are not anything I've had to ever really look at before, but I noticed that one of the requirements there, among other things, is that there's a prohibition on storage or processing of equipment or materials that are buoyant, flammable, explosive, or injurious to safety, whatever that means, or which would cause a violation of state water quality standards upon contact with water. And I'm curious what the department's perspective is on kind of how that type of restriction would play out for a facility like this, where I don't know to what extent, you know, there's any knowledge as to what's actually stored in it.
Sure. Through the chair, that's a good question. I am by no means an expert on flood hazard districts, but in my discussions with staff from Watershed Management Services, they had told me that the, there's a mapped flood plain, but that is a remnant from an older FEMA map, and it is unlikely that that flood plain is still present there, but it's a matter of updating the maps on file with FEMA, which, to my understanding, is quite an arduous process.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ron?
Thank you. Through the chair, staff, thanks for your presentation. My question is around site plan review with respect to the special limitation that was enacted through the AO, preserving the residential housing capacity of the district. Understanding that that language is around spatial constraint, two acres. Wondering if staff reviewed the site plan, perhaps in greater detail in terms of the design, with respect to the site's overall ability to still, you know, meet that standard and provide the housing that's needed there.
Through the chair, you know, perhaps the applicant could sort of speak to a little bit more on what they have envisioned for that two-acre space, but to the extent of the review done as part of this case, it was simply just verifying that there was two acres on-site where there was no permanent structures being placed so that you could make way for that residential housing down the line.
Seeing no one else remaining in the queue, if there's a representative from the applicant who'd like to speak to the application? And we've got some phones, so once you get it turned on, there should be, there we go, green button. If you can angle it up so it's close to your mouth, too, because it's hard to catch it otherwise. Thank you.
All right, I'm Chris Burt with Bell &amp; Associates. I'm just the representative for the owners there, and I can kind of go through a quick punch list of some of the stuff you guys were just talking about. The flood plain, it's just the little bit crosses the bottom southeast corner of the lot, and like you said, it's a remnant from an old creek that used to go back, way back in the day, so it's not really part of the development area there. As far as the housing density concern for the two acres, that two acres is basically, they took the units that the bigger lot could have supplied before and just said, this many units by this amount of area, and this is what it'll require. So that's where the two acres comes from, so it's just purely like a unit-per-density calculation. Once they actually put anything in that two areas, two acres that's designated, that's when the staff will do a full review to make sure that the appropriate amount of units are available, or if they aren't fully built out, that what's left can fulfill the 28 units. And then many of the items on the department recommendations, it's related to the site plan. This site, this site plan obviously was submitted, this application was submitted back in early June, late May. We had already submitted the site plan to the city and gotten full review, so the site plan's already been permitted, and almost every item that's on this list has been addressed. It's just they can't get their final occupancy or anything until it actually converts from the roller rink to a self-storage facility for the use. So all the site plan stuff and the traffic and landscaping, all that stuff's been resolved already, just heads up. And I guess that's it. I see you guys got any other questions?
Commissioner Strick?
Yes, thank you, through the chair, and thank you for that. You used a couple terminologies there. Almost all have been completed. All have been completed. So of the eight conditions, what hasn't been completed?
Well, I guess like four, stuff where it's just kind of like four and five, where they're just more talking about like uses per the code. I mean, that's not something that we necessarily address, it's just we don't have them in the site plan, so, I mean, it's not specifically, we didn't address those items.
Fair enough.
But everything else has been addressed that's related to the site plan. Like I said, we got a final permit.
And thank, and as a note to the rest of the commissioners, like number four, the storage of explosives, that's typically handled when the contract has happened, when people go to store their property on the building, they have to certify and attest that they're not storing unlawful materials.
Commissioner Pulis?
Just a quick question. No issues with relocating the driveway per DOT's request? You guys have already planned on that?
Yes, so actually DOT's request, they're, they actually, because there's already curb cuts and everything in Debar right there, that is the entrance, so as long as the traffic pattern doesn't change, like there's no new construction on the frontage there, that's the same entrance that'll stay in place. We're not relocating any of that. They just, it's just if we were to construct something new, then it changes the traffic patterns and the amount of traffic. Right now, there's, it's minimal traffic with self-storage. I mean, it's probably as much as the roller rink had in its heyday.
That makes sense, thank you.
Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, the chair. Looking at the site plan sheet A1 on Page 35, again, my interest is around the two acres, right? Quick math, maybe I'm looking at the wrong dimensions, but what I see, and please correct me because I think I'm wrong, is available space is 242 feet by 350 feet, and the math on that, to me, again, I may be making an error, doesn't quite add up to two acres. So the error's probably mine, just want to make sure.
What I would say is that's the architectural site plan, and so I can't verify those dimensions on that plan, I'm the civil engineer.
Sure.
And we also did the plat and the rezon. And so the area that's designated is, per the site plan that's been submitted and approved, is two acres. So I'd say it's probably their north-south dimension is probably off.
Thanks.
And Mr. Yeller, if you had a comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So interpretation in reviewing the special limitations was just to make sure that there weren't any permanent structures being placed within a two-acre portion. So Commissioner Ron, you're absolutely correct. I mean, 242 by 350 does not equal two acres, but looking at the space where they're placing the conexes, you know, conexes can be moved, so I guess we cut them a little slack on exactly how they were showing the two acres. But if the site were to be subdivided and say a two-acre portion, or a two-acre parcel were to be created, at that point, it'd be a little bit more stringent.
Thank you for entertaining that question, and the fellow commissioner just pointed out, it's actually my eyesight that may be off, as that's a 360-feet dimension, which works out to two acres.
Oh, there you go. Fair enough.
It's an easy solution there. Okay, I don't see anybody else pending in the queue. We've got 8 minutes 23 seconds for rebuttal, after we hear from the public if you'd like the time.
All right, sounds good.
Is there anyone here this evening wishing to speak to this case? Okay, seeing nobody, you've got some time for rebuttal if you want to make any final comments or statements?
I see you guys got any other questions. Do you have a question? No?
Anyone on the line, any questions? Okay, hearing none, thank you. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this matter. And what's the will of the body? Commissioner Strick?
Thank you. I move in case 2022-0087 to approve a major site plan review to develop a self-storage facility per the special limitations of AO 2021-79, subject to conditions 1 through 8, shown on Page 11 of the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Strick. Seconded, your motion is seconded by Commissioner Pulis. Commissioner Strick, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, thank you. I do show that the design criteria have all been met, as identified by staff, and that it's a pretty succinct laid-out plan.
I'll just go ahead and note that we didn't receive any comments from the public in the packet or at the hearing this evening. Seeing nothing pending, we'll go ahead and call a vote.
Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes, thank you.
Seven votes in favor, that motion passes. Next two items on the agenda, case S12691 and 2022-0097 are related, if the commission is interested. To combine the cases, get entertained a motion. Move by Commissioner Strick, seconded by Commissioner Pulis. Any objection? Seeing no objection, we'll go ahead and combine those two cases, and that will double the allotted time for the presentations and comments from the public. And I guess to start, if staff has a presentation?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we'll start with case S12691, which is the subdivision, and then I'll just roll over to the 202297, which is the amendment. I'll go ahead and begin. So this is a request to subdivide one tract into 70 lots and 10 tracts of land for Phase 4 and 5 to be developed as single-family lots. The lot sizes are arranged from 4,000 to about 7,500 square feet, and some of the underground facilities are already installed along Dry Creek Loop. The proposed subdivision meets the requirements of the approved planned unit development in the R1A zoning district. The PUD allowed up to 216 dwelling units, and the proposed plat will allow for 70 units in Phase 4 and 5, which will result in a buildout of 100 new dwelling units. So that's a decrease of 27 units overall. They're seeking to build the housing with single-family homes as opposed to duplex-style homes. There were no objections by the reviewing agencies. However, the State of Alaska requested the trail connection to Sand Lake Road be realigned to West Diamond, but as part of the original approval, the PUD, Condition Number 11 required the applicant to provide a pedestrian pathway to Sand Lake Road in the proximal location shown, and I know the engineers worked pretty hard on that because it is steep. So for road improvements, they'll need to construct Chalk Hill Loop to a municipal Class A standard. Both Dry Creek and Chalk Hill Loop are local roads, which will require 60 feet of right-of-way. Staffs made those conditions of approval, conformance with the adopted plans, it meets the 2040 land use plan, implements single-family detached homes, and this housing development promotes balanced neighborhoods, providing single-family homes in a single-family and two-family residential area. The development of this track will provide opportunities for desired housing and will be compatible with the existing duplex style and single-family condominium residence. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the recommendation conditions found on Pages 7 and 8 of the staff packet, and you'll need to vote or make a motion for A, which is approval of the phasing plan, and then B, approval of the plat with all those conditions for 60 months. That's why they're doing the phasing plan, is 60 months rather than 24 months for a regular plat. So you guys, the Planning and Zoning Commission has seen more plats than the Plating Board has this month, as they didn't have a meeting. So in the case of 202297, the amendment, so that's Sonoma Glen Development, is requesting approval for an amendment to a previously approved planned unit development, and they're asking from two variances, which you guys have seen last month, similar, and I'll go into the reason why. So let's see here. The proposed amendment retains as much of the similar layout as the original PUD condition use, but proposes 70 single-family units this time. The amendment to the original approval is a decrease in 27 units, which will increase the amount of open space and decrease density and congestion, and a little bit larger lots. So in the findings of the conditional use approval criteria, staff has found, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9 have been met. It is, the R1A is a single-family district, it's got the garages, it meets the topography, won't alter the character of the surrounding area, it's compatible with adjacent properties. And then the matter of AMC 2107-110H, conditional use for residential plan unit development for this amendment, it meets the intent approval of Condition 1 and all the subsections of that. The two minimum standards, it meets that. The open space, there is a variance for that, which we'll get into next, but the landscape plan shows open space that exceeds the requirement of 30%. There's also a minimum of 12%, maximum of 50, of required open space shall consist of yards for residents, and this complies, they're meeting the 50% provided. For design, it meets that with walkways, buffer landscaping per the original resolution Each house is going to have a heated garage or exterior outlet. Access and connectivity, it'll be served by the internal loop, and Chalk Hill Loop will have a sidewalk on either side, providing adequate street connectivity throughout the So we'll go into the variance. First variance is the open space, and that's a request to deviate from the requirement at least one-half of such open space shall be contiguous for a minimum of 30% of the site. So the applicant is seeking relief from this requirement, as there are slopes on the east, south, and southwest property boundaries that exceed 15 to 20%, which will be, they will be used as open space, but cannot be included in the calculation due to the definition of usable open space. However, in the previous approval, it was allowed. So they're about 36,000 square feet over the required open space. So in the matter of the variance, we find G, A is met. The site plan provides open space equal to the code requirement. B has been met. The granting of the variance allows for single-family development of the site comparable to the original planned development. C is met. It'll benefit from the large tracts that provide a buffer to the roadway. D has been met. It will not adversely affect the use of other properties. E has been met. The site plan shows more open space than is required. F does not affect ADA. G has been met. It has a positive effect and provides a buffer from the roadway. H is not applicable. All standards have been met for that. And then we move into variance number two, which you guys may have remembered from the previous one we've seen, the open space that states, "Any two adjacent buildings within a PUD shall be separated from each other by a distance equal to one-half the height of the taller building." So the applicant's proposing to eliminate that requirement and just maintain the side setback requirement for the R1A district, which is five feet. So for the approval criteria, we find standard A has been met, so that, you know, this intends for the regulation of tall multifamily buildings to have sufficient space, but these are single-family homes, and they'll have the R1A space separation of 10 feet. B has been met. Larger setbacks would shrink the size of homes. C has been met. Granting the variance will match the existing surrounding homes in the neighborhood, because they're all R1A. D has been met. The grant of the variance will not affect the use of other properties. E has been met, and the character of the zoning district won't change, because they're just going to stick with the R1A standard. F does not affect ADA. G has been met. It will not adversely affect the health safety of the, or welfare of the people in the municipality. And H is not applicable. So therefore, with all that being met, if on Page 17, staff recommends approval... being met, if on page 17, staff recommends approval of A, which is the variance for open space for slopes over 15%, B, the building separation distance to just meet the existing R1A setback, and C, the amendment to the previously approved conditional use. I can answer any questions, and the applicant's here as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Strike?
Thank you, through the chair. Thank you, staff, for that report. One question I have, an observation, and this is a phased development, and by that I mean, there's already existing homes nearby in this part of this PUD. This is just an extension of that same subdivision?
Through the chair, Mr. Strike, yeah, that's correct. They're doing five and six now. I don't know if those orders have been changed a little bit, but they're going to have these two phases, which are kind of, they're going to build, they're going to, it's going to finalize, fill everything out.
And I get that. Thank you. The concern I have is the current homes that are already built out, when viewed next door, because they're going to be somewhat abutted next to the two phases, how does this phase with the variance compare to the previous buildout that's already taken place? Are we going to see a visual change in the layout of these homes, i.e. with the five-foot setback variance, or with any of these variances?
Through the chair, I think they're all, I think they all have five-foot variance, or they all have five-foot separation for the existing stuff as it is. This was like a new code. All the old stuff was kind of under the older code, and they just stuck with the R1A setback, which is what they're asking here. So it'll be exactly comparable.
And that's exactly what I'm driving to, is that the buildout of this last two phases will be consistent with the buildout of the previous three phases from a visual standpoint and continuity.
That's correct, and same with the open space.
Thank you.
So, and just to correct, it is Phase Four and Five. I see Tony over there correcting me.
Oh, Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, through the chair. Staff, could you help me better understand the nuance and perhaps importance or lack thereof of the 60 months versus the 24 months that you mentioned?
Oh, yeah. So he's talking about the platting section. Normally, plats, if you come in, do a subdivision, you have 24 months to complete the plat. However, when you have a large development like this, and it's an option through the platting board, through in code, you could do it.
Sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. I'll see if we can, I don't know if that noise is coming in from one of the commissioners on the line, but Commissioner Winchester, Commissioner Krishna, could you mute? Or anybody else on the line?
Oh, Tony, grab the...
Oh.
Nope.
And Mr. Peterson, if you're on the line, can you try muting your line? If anyone on the line can please mute. Maybe I got it. Okay, sorry for the interruption.
Yeah, no problem. So yes, so with a large development, you're allowed to do it in phases, as you kind of build the road and the, all the utilities and sell the homes. So they do it, we allow for 60 months. And then, so they come in with Phase Four, record that section of the plat, and then they'll come back later and do Five.
Commissioner Polis?
I just had a question regarding the variance for the open slopes. I think I picked out somewhere in the packet that previously on the old plans, it was approved because the slopes were allowed to be steeper, like 20%?
That is, you're correct.
So basically, it changed mid, you know, mid-construction through this whole subdivision, and they're just requesting a variance to keep it the way it was originally approved?
That's 100% correct.
Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
Okay, seeing nothing further, if there's someone from the applicant who would like to speak?
Good evening. Through the chair, the commission, my name is Tony Hoffman. I'm with the Boote Company, and I prepared this application in front of you. Not all the plans and everything, but the application and the variances and such. So first, I'd like to discuss the PUD a little bit. I know we've been in front of you before here about two months ago and discussed another PUD that was pretty similar. It was an R3, and it was a new development. Now, what we're talking about is modifying our existing 2011 PUD application. So that approval, which was under the old code, permitted 216 units. So it was a combination of duplexes and single-family homes. Now, what we're asking for is a change and a subtraction of 27 units, which drops us down to about 4.7 DUA. We were at 5.4. So this, this PUD modification, effectively, you're not going to see any difference because the road alignments are the same, it's going to be the same builders, they have the same colors, the same house styles, are using the same plans, which are in your package. Some of those actually come out of the original 2011 application, and the only difference is we're not going to have any duplexes in the last two phases, Four and Five. We're dropping those because the main reason that we're here to develop these single-family lots is because of the issue with condominium financing. It is very difficult to get financing for large developments that are condominiums, and it's, fee simple lots are just a much better sell. So what we're trying to achieve are these compact lots. There's no real mechanism in the city code other than narrow lots, which will allow us to do what we want to do. And since we had the PUD approval, we discussed this quite a bit with the city. We could have just scrapped that approval, just gone in and tried to create these tracks and work with those, but we wouldn't have been able to utilize the open space and the density. So we wouldn't have been able to get as many lots, 70 lots, on these two tracts. It just, it wouldn't have worked because the width wouldn't have worked. So we're just trying to modify the PUD so it will allow us to do this type of development and just continue on with the existing building patterns. Now, the road alignments didn't change. Those were actually put down and designed in the late 90s when they overall cncaded and West Park Master Plan was done, and they masqueraded it. So we've not changed any of that. The utility layouts, if this were to not pass tonight, let's say, the utility layouts and everything else wouldn't change. The only thing that would change would, we'd have to put a few more services in. So you're not really going to effectively see, when you drive through these roads, you're not going to see a big change. The separation distance is, you're not going to really notice that. Most of the buildings out there are anywhere from, because the buildings are generally between 15 and 25 feet, they are between 10 and 12 and a half feet separation. But we're talking about duplexes here, not singles side by side. So it, effectively, when you're driving through there, you won't see it. There'll still be a homeowner association that will regulate the open spaces. So the whole, so the whole community will be part of that. So the open spaces, all that will remain the same. Until you get into the fee simple, the little lots, then those people have the ability to build their own fences and do whatever they want inside that. But the open spaces will all be still regulated and governed by the homeowner association. So it's kind of a hybrid, and it is fairly unique, I think, but we think it's the best way to move forward because of this financing thing. The other, the other issue, and there were some public comments, you know, why we're having this discussion really is, is trying to inform people what we're doing. We're not going to increase density. We're decreasing it. So whenever we come forward with an application of any sort, of course, we get the comments. We don't want any, you know, we don't want any changes to the density. We don't want increased traffic. Well, if we kept up with our current plan and density, there'd be more traffic than what we're going to propose. So I don't really have anything else to talk about. I think it's a pretty straightforward design. You know, we got this approval in 2011 under the old code, and you are right about that slope. That is the reason we're doing this, is we had to get the variance because the code, that is one thing that code changed, is we couldn't allow slopes over 15% now. In the old code, we could use 15 to 20%. So we wouldn't even be talking about that if that hadn't changed. With me tonight also is the engineer, Grant Matthews with Triad Engineering, and the owner's representative is here, Chris Peterson with Merritt Homes, one of the builders out there. So I don't have anything else to say. Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, like Tony said, my name's Grant. I'm with Triad Engineering, Grant Matthews, M-A-T-H-E-W-S. I'd just like to piggyback a little bit on what Tony said. The intent of this is primarily just to achieve fee simple financing. There were two comments received on the case. One spoke to, you know, kind of implying that we were trying to increase density by asking these variances, but in the reality of it is, it's the opposite because of going with these single-family lots, we're actually having to lose some units, so traffic would decrease in the neighborhood from what was previously or what is previously approved. And then the other comment requested access over to Sand Lake Road, but the DOT specifically prohibited in their comments that they would not allow access to Sand Lake Road, and there's approximately a 40 to 50-foot slope there that would be not constructable. But yeah, otherwise, just thanks, staff, for the presentation and answer any questions.
Thank you. So for those on the line, we're getting some additional feedback. If you can mute your line, please. Thank you. Okay, so I don't see any pending questions. Thank you. You've got about 14 minutes left for rebuttal, and if there's anyone here wishing to speak to either of these cases this evening, you can please come forward. Okay, seeing no one coming forward, I guess last call to speak to either of these cases. Commissioner Ron, no, I'm sorry.
Thank you, through the chair. Another look at some fine print, and hopefully it's misplaced. The landscape plan that I see in the application refers back to 2014 resolution, and it indicates a more choke cherry as a deciduous tree to be placed on site. I don't know my choke cherries as well as I should, but just want to see if that's a concern in terms of invasive species and the concerns that are had there in Anchorage. So... It's in the application packet, and it sheets L1 of 15.
If you could turn the mic back on as well before you start speaking, thank you.
Not being the landscape architect, I really don't know if I'm qualified to answer this question. I do know that the choke cherries are an invasive species, but other than that, I don't know. This will have to be vetted before, by the municipality, before we actually do the installation of this landscaping. So that's all I can say.
Thanks for that response. It could be, you know, my concern was, is this dating back to 2014? If so, perhaps it wasn't, you know, addressed as an invasive species at that point in time, but just raise it to the attention of staff and the applicant to make sure that we're moving in the right direction with landscaping.
And I guess, having heard no one from the public come forward to speak, you've got 14 minutes if you want to make any other comments while you're up here.
Again, thank you for your time, and we really don't have anything else to add. I think it's pretty well laid out in the application. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation and information. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on these two items. And as a reminder, I guess, for the commission, it looks like we've got two cases pending before us, and we'll need two separate motions on the case S12691, and ultimately, three separate motions on 20220097. Commissioner Strike?
Get this moving forward here. I move in case S12691, the Sonoma Glen and West Park, to approve the phasing plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Strike. Your motion is seconded by Commissioner Polis. Commissioner Strike, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Anyone on the line? Any commissioners on the line for that matter, to be precise? Or Commissioner Polis?
Yeah, I'll speak to the motion. I think the proposed subdivision conforms with the adopted plan and provides a variety of lot sizes and housing units, which should fit in with the surrounding neighborhood, as we heard testified and stated in the packet. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Polis. Seeing no other commissioners in the queue, we'll go ahead and call the vote. This is the motion to approve the phasing plan.
Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes, thank you.
Seven votes in favor, that motion passes. Commissioner Strike?
Thank you. I move in case S12691 to approve the plat for 60 months, subject to conditions one through six, shown on page seven and eight of the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner Polis. Commissioner Strike, would you like to speak to your motion?
As identified by staff, this, the extension of the, to the 60-month is to accommodate the full buildout of the phasing that's deemed appropriate.
Seeing no other commissioners in the queue, we'll go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes, thank you.
All right, seven votes in favor, that motion passes. That leaves us with case 20220097. Commissioner Strike?
On a roll here. I move in case 2022-0097 to approve the variance from AMC 21.07.110H.2.B.2. Open space to allow slopes over 15% to count towards the minimum of the 30% of the site shall be reserved as open space.
Thank you, Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner Polis. Commissioner Strike, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you. This variant is, variance, as explained, but through staff and through testimony, is consistent with the prior code at which this development was originally built under, and so this just remains consistent with the rest of the neighborhood subdivision as built out.
Thank you, Commissioner Strike. Seeing no further comments from the commission, we'll go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes, thank you.
Seven votes in favor, that motion passes.
Thank you. I move in case 2022-0097 to approve the variance from AMC 2.07.110H.2.C.3, designed to allow the building separation distance to be subject to R1A side setback minimums per AMC 21.06.1, Table of Dimensional Standards, Residential Districts of 5 Feet.
Thank you, Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner Polis. Commissioner Strike, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you. And this variance is consistent with the prior code, as identified previously in the subdivision, that was, when it was originally built and starting to be built out, and that was just subject to the change in the code recently, that identified the additional requirements, therefore, moving forward with this variance. Question, will there be time for findings? Are we doing those each, or can we do at the end? Or is this the end?
I think now would be a fine time if you wanted to add additional findings.
I think one of the findings here, too, is that during public testimony, we had no public testimony for or against, and that the comments that we've received in the packet do not speak negatively to the variances and the changes that have been approached and addressed here this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Strike. And I'll just note, to the extent it's not apparent explicitly in the motion itself that this variance permits a building separation distance that is consistent with the R1A district applicable in this area. Seeing no further comments, we'll go ahead and call the vote.
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Strike.
Thank you. I move in case 2022-0097 to approve the amendments to a previously approved conditional use for residential planned unit development, subject to conditions 1 and 2, shown on page 17 of the staff report.
Seconded by Commissioner Polis. Commissioner Strike, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, the findings that we noticed during the testimony and by the staff report, the conditions were met, and that this is consistent with the site build-out anticipated.
Thank you, Commissioner Strike. Seeing no further comments, we'll call the vote.
Mr. Krishna, excuse me, Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes, thank you.
With seven votes in favor, no opposed, that motion passes. Okay, we still have two public hearing items remaining, but there is a short appearance request that appears later on our agenda that I understand the individual is currently present, so if the commission is interested, we could entertain a motion to reorder to hear that case or that item now briefly.
So moved.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Spinelli. Okay, hearing and seeing none, that motion passes, so we'll move to an appearance request
Thank you very much. I appreciate this opportunity. I do understand all the responsibilities and functionality that the two, that this board is going through, and I appreciate it. I did serve on this commission for five and a half years at one point in time, a while ago. I'm here to discuss briefly and to give you a brief overview of the Holton Hills' proposed subdivision, which has had quite a bit of public comment to it. So in April of 2021, the Heritage Land Bank put out an RFP to develop a portion of their Girdwood Holdings. In June 2021, the RFP was reviewed by the selection committee, and the RFP was awarded with a 9 to 0 vote in favor of CY Investments' proposal. The accepted proposal was a partnership between the Heritage Land Bank and CY Investments, with planned unit community development overlaid by a conditional use following the Area Creek, Area Crow Creek master plan with amendments that will be put forward. It includes the cost of the entitlement process and approvals, land contribution from the Heritage Land Bank, with financing from roads, water, sewer, gas, and electric by CY Investments, with a 50-50 share of profits. There were two key points that contributed to the award. The first was mixed density, to provide entry level to luxury housing, to include duplex condos, townhouses, fourplexes, small, single lot family lots, and luxury, single-family home sites. A mix of housing types and lot sizes increases residential density, which in turn helps create a local population large enough to support a vibrant community. This is mixed density within a single community. It is different from mixed use because there are no commercial aspects to it. Mixed density already exists in Girdwood, and it is not a new concept. There are condominiums next door to small, single-family homes, as well as multimillion-dollar homes. The second reason that contributed to the award was, I am a developer, my team is a developer, we are not builders, so all lots and home sites will be open to a wide variety of builders and private parties. CY Investment Plans required planned unit development with a conditional use, approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and so I'm giving you sort of a brief overview. You are the last stop in a long process that we are going to go through. The original RFP was for 448 acres. The three tracts that will be developed into Holton Hills will only be 60.1. Over the boundary, once the boundaries for the three tracts are established and approved by the plating board through the public process, the excess land will be transferred back to Heritage Land Bank. Then we will be going to the plating board, and our last stop is to this body, because you will be asked to approve and comment on the planned unit development with a conditional use overlay, actually, which is sort of ironic, which is very similar to what you just heard tonight, but it will be a new community, excuse me, and it will follow the area-wide Crow Creek master plan that was put forth several years ago, and that was approved by you and the Anchorage Assembly. We have several things we have to go through. The Section Line Isment Vacation paperwork has been submitted to the Department of Natural Resources. We are working with the Girdwood Board of Supervisors and Land Use Committee for the three tracts presented by Tony Hoffman. We've ordered a preliminary title report. We've ordered the boundary survey. We have a wetland survey for phases 1 and 2. We have a weekly partnership meeting between Heritage Land Bank and CY Investments, and we are working with the Working Housing Group, which is a subset of the Board of Supervisors. We cannot do this work without the land transfer approval by the Anchorage Assembly, which we anticipate to occur towards the end of the year, and also the three-phase plat at the plating board, which will be heard on November 2nd. So this is sort of a preliminary overview, so once the land transfer occurs and the three-phase plat is approved at the plating board, then this work will come to your body for approval of the planned unit development with the conditional use overlay, along with amendments to the Crow Creek master plan. So I wanted to give you this overview. There has been a lot of comment, both on Facebook and in the newspaper, about this project, so I wanted to come forward. You'll probably be seeing me again in another month or two, because this is, according to Dave Whitfield, the most complicated project that has ever been brought before at the planning board. I will be here occasionally to give you some updates. I think that's my three minutes, I'm not sure.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I guess before we move on, I'll try and break my streak of just carrying on without any breaks, so I'll just check, quick check-in with the commission, if anyone needs a break or anyone on the line before we move on to the last two cases. We will keep moving. Brings us to our last two items, which can also be combined, if the commission is doing so, we could entertain a motion. Commissioner Spinelli? Sorry, Mr. Spinelli, are you moving to combine the?
Yes, I'm moved to combine the public hearings.
Thank you, apologies. Seconded by Commissioner Ron. Any objection? Okay, seeing none, that motion passes. We'll combine the last two cases, 2022-0099 and 2022-0100, which will double the time allotted for testimony and presentations. Can we hear from staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The MOA Project Management and Engineering Department is requesting conditional use approval for land reclamation in the first case. The purpose of the land reclamation is to create a base for the new West Anchorage snow dump within the PLI district. Therefore, the land reclamation is in interim use, and a conditional use for the snow disposal site is being processed concurrently with a separate case. The special limitations in this PLI SL district say the use shall either be a snow disposal, shall either be a snow disposal or park or open area. The main project area is a flat 32-acre parcel of land that is located south of De La Vega Fields. The land reclamation project limits include parts of Clope Street Maintenance Station, Connors Bog Park, and De La Vega Fields. These areas are needed for transition of the driveway from Northwood Drive to the snow disposal site, and to connect the Connors Bog Trail to the De La Vega Fields. The 32-acre snow disposal site is approximately 30 feet lower in elevation than the Clope Station and De La Vega Fields. The West Anchorage District Plan identified the need to find a municipal snow disposal site because there's only one in West Anchorage, and it's leased from the Ted Stevens International Airport. Land owned by the airport is reserved for commercial aviation purposes as a requirement of FAA grant assurances. The use of Ted Stevens' own land for anything unrelated to aviation is only temporary and requires fair market rent in exchange for FAA grant funding. The West Anchorage Snow Disposal Site Selection Study recommended this property for the placement of the snow disposal site. Neither state nor municipal reviewing agencies have an objection to the project. 199 public hearing notices were mailed on August 19th. As of this writing, no responses were received from the public. The Sand Lake Community Council adopted a resolution supportive of the project. The Taku Campbell Community Council didn't comment. I'm holding over my head the comments submitted after the packet was finalized, so if you look in that supplemental, you'll see the Turning In Community Council provided a letter in regards to the case. The Planning Department finds that the nine approval criteria for a conditional use are met, also the approval criteria for land reclamation are met, and the department's recommending approval of this conditional use for land reclamation, subject to conditions 1 and 2 on page 11 of your packet. Now, turning to the snow disposal site conditional use. This conditional use is for a 14-acre snow disposal site on a 32-acre tract of land in the PLI SL district. State and municipal agencies have no objection to this conditional use. The Non-Motorized Transportation Coordinator recommends changing the grass trail to recycled asphalt paving. She believes that it will sustain better and require less maintenance. 114 public hearing notices were mailed on August 19th. Again, no public comments were received. Included in your packet is the Sand Lake Community Council's adopted resolution of support for the conditional use. The Taku Campbell didn't, Community Council didn't comment, and you have in your supplemental packet the Turning In Community Council's comments. Again, staff found that the approval criteria for a conditional use are met, including Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan Policy 1.1, 5.1, 6.2, Anchorage 2020 Policies 7, 49, 67, 71, 79, 30, 81, and the West Anchorage District Plan Transportation Objective Number 5, Parks Objective Number 4, Utilities Objectives 1, 3, and I forget the other policy number. Let's see. Department finds that the approval criteria, conditional use standards for a snow disposal site are met, and is recommending approval of this conditional use, subject to conditions 1 through 7 on page 12 of your packet. So the first two are standard conditions of approval. The third condition of approval says to change on the plans, the trail from grass to recycled asphalt. Condition of approval number four is just to, they're showing in phantom lines, a driveway to the AWU cleanout, and that should just be darkened. And then, standard conditions for a snow disposal site are providing to planning a dust control pant, plan, litter management plan, and another standard condition, the last one, is that they have to comply with the noise ordinance. So with that, I'm finished with my presentation. Thanks.
Okay, is there a representative from the applicant ready to speak?
My name is Lori Cummings, and I'm with HDR. I'm here with Melinda Sue, the project manager from Project Management and Engineering Department, Paul Van Landingham, the Muni Street Maintenance Manager, and the rest of the project team. I'm representing PMNE, requesting approval of two conditional use permits to facilitate the development of a new snow disposal site in West Anchorage. Okay, sorry about that. Now that works. Technology, gotta love it. So, the West Anchorage Snow Disposal Project will develop a new snow disposal site near Connors Bog. It will replace the leased Northwood Snow Disposal Site located south of International Airport Road off Northwood Drive. The city needs a site in West Anchorage that they have long-term management over in order to justify spending municipal funds on needed improvements to address to justify spending municipal funds on needed improvements to address operational and environmental issues. This snow disposal site is an essential facility that will allow the city to provide cost-effective and reliable snow removal service in the long term. So, the city's street maintenance crews are responsible for snow removal on approximately 1,300 lane miles of roads in the Anchorage Bowl. This is a very complex operation, requiring multiple crews to operate, to be operating simultaneously to clear snow from roads all over town. To help manage these operations in an efficient manner, the city is divided into several snow service, snow disposal service areas, as shown on the map here. This Northwood Drive service area generally serves West Anchorage, but please note that these are general service boundaries and not fixed boundaries, meaning that snow, street maintenance sometimes has to haul snow from one service area to another based on operational needs. A snow disposal site in this West Anchorage area is critical because despite their best efforts, snow can remain on the ground for several days before crews can haul it off. This would worsen if the snow had to be hauled further to a snow disposal site in one of these other service areas. In addition, many of these other snow disposal sites are already at capacity in an average snow year, meaning they do not have the capacity to accommodate additional snow. And the demand for snow removal is only going to increase. As new roads are built or old ones are rebuilt, their footprints are often expanded to include sidewalks and bike lanes. This reduces the area within the right-of-way for snow storage and puts increased pressure on the city's snow haul and storage systems. Developing a new snow disposal site in West Anchorage that the city has long-term control over has been underway for several years. It started with PMNE conducting a robust site selection study to identify this site as the preferred location, and then they had to undertake a series of planning actions in order to develop the site. So far, the project has obtained an intragovernmental use permit to use a small portion of dedicated parkland for the access road, a comprehensive plan amendment to change the classification of the land from park or natural area to community facility or institution, a rezoning from transition to public lands and institutions, a variance allowing snow disposal sites to be within 25 feet of a Class A or Class B wetland, and another variance to allow snow melt water to flow onto adjacent properties because this action will benefit the Connors Bog Wetland Complex. And now, we are asking for approval of two conditional use permits. One for land reclamation activities on four parcels and one for the development of a snow disposal site on one parcel. The design of the snow disposal site is based on municipal requirements, operational needs, input from several Muni departments, including street maintenance and parks and recreation, and the public. The snow disposal site consists of a 14-acre pad that is surrounded by natural wetlands, a water quality detainment area, and a berm that are part of the site's water quality treatment system to treat snow melt runoff. The snow disposal pad is also surrounded by a fence to prevent trespassing and to catch wind-blown litter. This project also includes a new access road. This access road would be fenced along both sides and would be lit, and this road would only be accessible by those with street maintenance approval. And we are also developing a new trail connecting Connors Bog to Javier de La Vega Park to offset the loss of social trails in this area. In addition, some other amenities such as park benches and signage will also be installed in this area. So as I mentioned, land reclamation activities will occur on four parcels. On the proposed snow disposal site, land reclamation is needed to develop the snow disposal pad, berms, and other features. On the dedicated parkland, land reclamation will occur to support the development of the access road. On Javier de La Vega Park, land reclamation is needed to support the development of the trail. And on Clope Station, land reclamation is needed because the existing road needs to be widened to accommodate access to the snow disposal site, and that requires reconfiguring their parking lot. So the land reclamation work will be conducted in two phases to provide surcharge compression of the underlying peat soils and then regrading the fill to provide a pad surface for snow deposition. Pending bond funding approval, Phase 1 construction is anticipated to occur between summer 2023 and spring 2024, and Phase 2 would start in summer 2024 and would extend until the fall of 2025. This would result in this snow disposal site being operational for the 2025-2026 snow season. Land reclamation activities would have minimal off-site impacts. There will be some temporary impacts such as noise, vibration, dust, and traffic, but because the site is surrounded by industrial uses, Minnesota Drive, and open space, we expect those impacts to be minimal, temporary, and not change the character of the area. So similar to the land reclamation activities, the project team expects the snow disposal site to also have minimal off-site impacts. Because the snow disposal site needs to be operational on a 24/7 basis, one reason this site was chosen over the other sites considered in the slight selection study was because it would have low impacts on adjacent properties. At this location, the impacts would be almost the same as the existing Northwood Snow Disposal Site. It would just be about 1,500 feet to the east. Recently, we held two public meetings at Connors Bog and most people were not aware there was an operating snow disposal site in the area. Or if they did, they felt that it did not attract from their enjoyment of the area. And to date, street maintenance has not received any complaints associated with snow disposal operations at Northwood Site. Now, this new site is further from existing residential areas than the existing Northwood Drive Site. This area is surrounded by undeveloped land, parkland, Minnesota Drive, and the existing Clope Station maintenance facility, so it's compatible with the surrounding uses. The trail will allow recreational users to access the area more, but it'll provide a better recreational experience because they will have a trail to walk on instead of trying to walk through the wetlands. And impacts to Javier de La Vega Park users will be minimal as most of the park use occurs during the summer when there will be minimal activity at the snow disposal site. During the summer, most of the activity would be limited to trash removal from the existing snow pile. And so trucks will continue to use International Airport Road and Northwood Drive to access the snow disposal site. No, and we don't expect traffic levels to change, so people will experience about the same amount of activity. The project will also be improving water quality in Connors Bog. At the existing Northwood Snow Disposal Site, snow melt water is not treated prior to it being discharged into the bog. However, the design of the new site includes a green infrastructure approach to water treatment. This means that rather than excavating treatment and detention ponds and creating artificial wetlands to process the melt water, our design is relying on larger detention areas of undisturbed natural wetland to treat the snow melt and provide cleaner discharge. This cleaned water will then be dispersed onto the adjacent properties that are part of the wetlands bog complex. You know, snow site melt water is an important water source for Connors Bog. It provides approximately 25% to 30% of the water that enters the bog. And our treatment system disperses water at multiple points to help the hydration effects onto the bog. So the project team also considered what the site would look like. This image is a visualization of what someone standing on the AWU trail facing the snow disposal site is likely to see. And this visualization shows what the site would look like to someone on Minnesota Drive. We plan to keep the existing trails along Minnesota Drive to meet the landscaping requirements. These trees will provide some screening of the snow pile in the winter, but will also help preserve the park-like appearance of the area, and this vegetation will also provide areas for wildlife refuge in the area. In addition, seeing a snow disposal site is a fairly common site around Anchorage as many other sites, such as the one on 100th, are visible from the road. So, in conclusion, we hope you approve our two conditional use permits to allow the Muni to develop this essential facility. A substantial amount of work has been put into developing a site that meets the operational needs of street maintenance in a way that addresses the community concerns and respects the site location in Connors Bog. We believe this snow disposal site is in the community's best interest as it will provide an efficient, cost-effective snow removal in West Anchorage and a safe transportation system for all users. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that presentation. Commissioner Strick.
Thank you, and to the board, to the chair. Approximately, I want to say, two and a half years ago, maybe through, maybe about two and a half years ago, I believe your group was before us presenting another alternative snow removal site off of Minnesota. And it dealt with how you were handling the water treatment and the wastewater and the oil-water separation. It was near the, not the tree where they, where they dump all the old trees there across, off, on Minnesota on the west side. Doesn't sound familiar?
Not to me. Does anybody else?
That was what?
Bill, do you want to come up and talk into the microphone so the people on the phone can hear you?
But was that not also, it was to treat the water from the runoff, from the snow collection from?
Yeah.
Come and talk into the microphone so the commissioners on the phone can hear you.
No, no, because we went through all of this.
I'm Bill Spencer, and I was involved in that other project as well. I'm also with HDR. So the other project was a facility to-
Can you, sorry, can you lift the mic up just a little bit? Because it is harder to focus on the phone if it's not perfect. Thank you.
So I believe the other facility was for a sediment treatment facility for vector truck waste, and that was the waste that's generated by vector trucks that vacuum out storm drains. And then they have this large amount of water and sediment-laden waste that needs a place to be settled.
I may be confusing another project then because I swear that we were talking about how the Anchorage International Airport, they're running out of space, we're going to lose the lease ability there to do the snow dump and that this was going to be a new alternative out here on Minnesota, and they were working on how this water and the treatment, and so it wasn't how the water would be treated before it was released. But notwithstanding, let's, let's get back to the water treatment here and how you're going to release that water. Is there an oil-water separation that takes place in a, is that your sediment pond? That you anticipate using?
Do you want me to take this question? Okay. So the plan for this new site is to, so the water will come off of the pad and go into existing wetlands, and we are going to enclose a portion of the existing wetlands in a berm so that this water is retained inside that berm and the settling will happen in the actual marsh. And this is a little bit like what happens out at 100th Avenue, the snow disposal site there is similar to that, only it uses a constructed wetland. Here, we're going to use existing wetlands.
So, any of the oil, sediment, and so forth that's picked up with the snow removal gets put right into the wetlands?
So, most of the, most of the oils and whatnot are contained on the sediment particles, and those will be settled in this containment area. And yes, it is going to be existing marsh.
Yep.
And then, once we release that water out into the larger bog, we have already settled those particles out. That's the, it's got to settle somewhere.
And it's got to settle someplace and, you know, any concerns with this process?
Um, no, I don't think there, I mean, it's a fairly common process. Through most of the snow disposal sites around the city, they have some sort of a settling area, and either those settled areas are cleaned out on a regular basis or they don't build up enough that, that there's any appreciable need to do that. But this is, this is the common method of treating this water that comes off a snow site.
I agree, this is the common method, but it's not common to put it this near, near the wetlands into the Connor Bog area. That's, that's the concern.
I'll just add that we have been coordinating with watershed management, sorry. I'll just add that we have been coordinating with watershed management throughout the design process, and they have, they're okay with our design.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, the chair. Ms. Cummings and Mr. Spencer, a follow-on question to fellow commissioner. Part of it's operational and part of it is treatment planned. In your application, page 15, you talk about MagCL and how the Muni currently doesn't use very much of it. I don't think you used the words "currently." That's just my assumption. So I'm curious about the time horizon that was applied to that design consideration. Winters are changing in Anchorage, and what might that mean for current design versus future need?
I'll actually let Paul Van Lanningham, he's the Street Maintenance Manager, answer
Thank you, through the chair. Magnesium chloride usage throughout the Anchorage Bowl in the last 15 to 20 years has been reduced by 50%. We are currently using around 5,000 gallons area-wide per winter. A lot of that is used to pre-wet the sand as it goes into the sanders, and a portion of it is used for pre-storm treatment on dry pavement around our roundabouts, some of our hills and things like that. Our salt usage is down 98%. We have a small stockpile that we use for emergency usage during these rainstorms that we've been seeing over the last four or five years, but magnesium chloride usage is used on a very rare occasion anymore. We have warm storage areas for all of our salt and things like that, and we just don't see the need for using it. Most of the use for mag chloride anymore is used for dust suppressants and during our spring sweeping operations. Yeah, our warm, excuse me, our warm storage is for sand storage, not for salt storage. We have a very small stockpile, around 60 ton that we use per year, and I think last year we used about eight or nine tons of that. So our salt and magnesium chloride usage is being reduced yearly.
I have a question of pretty much everyone in the room. It is my understanding that snow site area outfalls are monitored, like they have to produce annual reports or something like that? Is that correct? Does anyone know in here?
I believe they were monitored historically, but several years ago, watershed management decided to stop that monitoring because they were not finding any problems associated with the snow disposal sites. So. Anything you want to add, Melinda?
Hello, my name's Melinda Su. I'm with PMNE. And yeah, we work with Eric Holman with PTS, and he prepares a lot of the facility SWPs and does a lot of the checklist annually. And that's, that's what he reported is, is previously there has been water quality management, and over the course of years, they just haven't found much issues with it. So in conjunction with DEC, not just watershed management services, the conclusion was to not do any further management or monitoring of the water quality.
Okay. I mean, I could confirm, I've been to some of those, you know, annual SWP things where they were reporting the, what they were finding on those. So I remember it happening, I just didn't know if it was still occurring.
They had been doing it, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, through the chair. What's the future look like for the existing Northwood Snow Disposal Site? Has Muni established a position on whether or not they would continue to use it in addition to this new site if they had access to it? And do you have any knowledge that you could share, understanding that you don't own that site, as to what it might be used for in the future?
That particular site is owned by the airport, so it's basically up to the airport what they choose to do with that land, something to support airport operations. If an opportunity arose for the city to acquire that land, that would be something they would consider because the planning documents have identified a need not only for an existing snow disposal site, but an additional snow disposal site in West Anchorage. But as of right now, there are no plans to acquire that site. The airport plans to retain ownership and operations over that parcel.
I guess I'll just ask, I'm curious, I think staff mentioned the late-received comments from the Turnigan Community Council, and I didn't know if any of you had had a chance to review that or had any thoughts on their, or comments on their proposed conditions.
I'll let Melinda speak to those.
You know, we've met with the Turnigan- You know, we've met with the Turnigan Community Council members as a group at their, let's see, they have a land use committee, and I think we've met with them like twice, and they've also come to all of our open houses with various members. So we're aware of some of their interests and their comments and concerns, but no.
And I guess specifically, I don't know if you've seen the comments, the specific ones they submitted for this case, and they gave a couple of proposed conditions with the approval, that, are you familiar with those, or did you see their comments?
No.
Okay. I guess I'd be curious, I'd be happy to share a copy. If you wouldn't, I'll just share a copy, and if you wouldn't mind taking a look, I'm just curious for your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we're idling for just a second, I read, so staff read the Turnigan Community Council's letter very closely, highlighted the conditions of approval that they recommended. The first one said specifically, so they're asking for a condition of approval saying this, specifically state on the plat, "All final documents that the above designated wooded, vegetated, wetland area shall be preserved and remain in the natural state to serve as long-term buffering and provide for public recreation, open space, and wildlife habitat uses." So it looks like they, you know, they're concerned with the, like the snow disposal site growing, and that it be retained as open space. The conditional use that you're reviewing today approves the site plan, includes the narrative and the drawing and all that. But the, we believe that this condition of approval is unnecessary, because the site will be constructed according to the drawing in your packet. And so they wouldn't expand the snow disposal site beyond the footprint shown to you, without having to return to the Planning and zoning commission for a brand-new public hearing and community meeting and the whole six-month, you know, sort of process. So the intent, I understand, but we feel that that issue is covered. Similarly, we think that the other conditions of approval that they are requesting are covered. So the next one is a bullet point, says, they're asking, "Direct the project planners to choose a trail route that minimizes disturbance and removal of existing trees and vegetation within the site area, including locating the trail immediately adjacent to the playing fields rather than through the mature trees." So in the narrative of your packet, the applicant is saying, "We're showing the location of the trail on the Delevega Field Site, you know, connecting trail, but we're still working that out with Parks and Rec Department. It's their land." And so, I mean, I believe that Parks and Rec and the project team are committed to finding the best location for the trail and minimizing disturbance and removal of trees. Okay? And then the next page, so page three, the last page, their conditions of approval they're requesting are, "Support future action to preserve, for the preservation of the remaining Conners Bog wetland not included as part of this, and recommend Municipal Parks and Rec Department work with the West Anchorage Community Councils on the process of park dedication for these municipal-owned Conners Bog wetlands areas." And, you know, that may be fine. The process for park dedication starts with the Parks and Rec Commission. It's certainly something community councils and municipality can work towards. It's not in the, you know, the purview of this actual conditional use. Considering, so the next one they're asking for, "Considering the need for the Conners Bog management plan, and considering the need for a Conners Bog management plan and work with staff and community councils to initiate such planning." Well, actually, I'm not really sure what that one is. Conners Bog Management Plan. Hmm. Yeah, I mean, maybe that takes expert on wetlands. I mean, I think that the, this project, they have the design and the science behind trying to improve, rehydrate the wetlands, and to not damage them, as they described earlier. Thanks.
I think, appreciate that explanation and comments. If there's anything else you wanted to add, feel free.
Sure, okay, I'm just getting caught up here. Thanks, Frances.
Yeah, I think-
Okay.
So I think we would agree with what Frances said about the trail, is we've been working with the Parks and Rec Department since this project kind of was initiated, or at least the design phase was, to try and come up with a design that respected the location in Conners Bog and try and minimize the loss of the existing vegetation, and still honor the fact it's near playing fields, because while some people may want it closer to the playing fields, others may want it further away, because they don't want a stray soccer ball. So we've been working with the Parks Department to try and determine the appropriate location that would not impact, you know, more vegetation than we needed to. So that process is still ongoing, so we are incorporating their concerns into that process, and we'll continue to work with Parks and Rec on that.
So if I can add, we, oh, did I just push it? We as a team met Tom Carosi and Steve Ruffusi at the park, and we walked both of these alignments, and, you know, we walked through the trees, and we walked alongside, in the upper, alongside the ball fields, and tried to kind of like look at some of these options, and looked at it from their perspective. You know, one thing that we did note is if they stuck with the trail alignment through the trees, what our observation is, is there really wouldn't be tree removal, I mean, at least not in a major fashion. Most of it just to create kind of a, and it's not like a big trail, you know, corridor, it's really just this connection piece to get from the parking lot, and then create this new connection to the AWU trail. But so that little squiggly piece that you're looking at in that upper graphic there is what we're talking about. And we're still open to either direction. We really want to kind of allow Parks and Rec be the main driver of, from all their experience and all their different factors that they have to consider with, like what Lori said, is the conflict with dogs, walkers, ball field players, what's the best experience for all of that to occur? But we're going to continue that conversation.
Thank you.
If I could speak to the other one about preserving, I think what it's talking about is preserve the unused area of the 32 acres. So right now, you know, our snow disposal pad itself is about 14 acres, but when you add up the area with the berm and the water treatment area itself, and the trail, actually, you know, we're up to like 18 to 20 acres being utilized so far in our site plan. You know, what we, what we don't want to do is create a restriction for future consideration. You know, what I respect about the planning process is, it is a process to envelope all the different considerations with the current environment, and how, what are the needs, what are the interests, what's in the best interest of the public. So right now, you know, what we've designed is to meet the snow storage needs for current and for the foreseeable future. But, you know, if we were to now make a decision with this body and put additional conditions to say that we cannot use the remaining 32 acres, which would be maybe roughly 10 additional acres, in the future, it would be, it would create an inflexibility for the municipality and for snow storage. Right now, with all the urbanization that happens, you know, there's only going to be more demand on snow storage. You know, the interest in, for complete streets and all different modes of transportation and active transportation, we have less and less areas remaining in the right-of-way to store snow for the interim use. So it does put a lot of pressure for our snow hauling and snow hauling operations. So anyways, if there is a need for expansion, we would rely on the same process that we've gone through with the planning and the planning actions and the review bodies to make those decisions, and relook at whether even going back to a full public process, if we can expand those areas. With the, you know, potentially needing a core permit, we'd have to even open up, you know, in the future, have to open up another site selection study, look for that least environmentally damaging, damaging, practicable alternative. So there would be a lot of consideration that would go into it. But I think to do anything that would permanently restrict use would be, you know, kind of an issue for the, for our future generation, really.
I appreciate those additional comments.
The other one is, I think there's something about a Conners Bog management plan, if you want, I could speak to that.
I'll open it up to Commissioner, okay, go ahead.
You know, I don't know too much about this, this is new to me. You know, I know there has been an interest in the past of more park planning for that area, you know, and I guess I would just leave that to the Parks Department, you know, what's their knowledge and interest of doing some further study of that area? You know, some of the things that we don't know anything about, and Commissioner Ron, you brought up about what's the future of the existing site. You know, municipality, we don't know. We have heard that DOT is undertaking a airport master plan. You know, I keep going back their site and seeing if there's anything new that I should be aware of, and I haven't seen anything new yet. But just to be, for all of us to be aware of, you know, a large portion of what's being used for recreational space currently is still owned by DOT. So it's kind of one of those things, unless they come back and have a new use for that, for the meantime, you know, users can enjoy that for recreational uses, as well as Parks and Rec manages it. But other than that, I don't know how that factors into the complication of forging forward with a plan when there's certain areas that we don't own. But I'm sure that Parks and Rec could be open to something, but again, it might be just under their purview.
Thank you. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, through the chair. Could someone from the applicant's team please inform me and the commission a little bit more about the hydraulic and hydrologic analysis and perhaps even modeling that was done? We're looking at a figure up there that I'm assuming is talking about sheet flow and a new culvert, so please share some of that good work that was hopefully done.
I think we'll let Bill take this one.
Yeah, so the, pretty much the entire site where the proposed pad is, is underlaying by approximately six to eight feet of peat. And underlaying that is a layer of sandy gravel, as I remember, so we've sort of looked at the, at the geotech information that's come out of the drilling program that we So I think historically, the site slopes from the north-east corner down pretty much straight towards the AWU corridor, which is labeled here as the Conners Bog Recreation Trail. So the sheet flow across the site right now, as whatever snow falls on the site or rain falls on it, migrates across the bog in that direction. And so we're not trying to change any of that, we're going to add more water into that system and release it through those three weirs that are shown here on the map. And there's one existing culvert underneath this corridor, the more northern one, and we're going to add three more. There's only one shown here, but there's two farther south, so that water will be able to migrate through the AWU corridor and then make its way into Conners Lake eventually. So that's the general plan for the hydrology. So there's surface, there's surface flow across the bog right now. These peat bogs are sort of interesting, if you go in there and look at the geotech drillings that were done for the site, the actual water table is down, at certain times of the year, it's beneath the surface, four to six feet. And so because this peat is so impervious, a lot of the snow melt that melts across the bog and the rain that falls on it, it actually migrates across the surface and never actually gets down into the aquifer. Since that's why we're providing as much overland flow and connectivity into the western part of the bog as we can.
Thank you for that, Mr. Spencer.
Commissioner Polis.
And just to confirm, we're pretty much not increasing the amount of snow being stored compared between the old site and the new site?
Correct.
Okay. There's no chance of that going up at all? I have a question, just, it's probably a stupid question, but say we had like a really bad winter and the snow dump was completely full, you know, I looked at that on the watershed mapper earlier, and basically the lake's the low point, it collects all the drainage in there, and there's no outlet at all, and it doesn't seem like that area is, you know, small enough to have any flooding issues? But is there any need to think about any of that? We probably haven't counted the volume of runoff we're going to get. I'm assuming we haven't got that far into an H&amp;H study.
Well, the existing snow disposal site at Northwood has been operational for many, many years, including some of the highest snowfall years that the city has seen. So I don't believe there's been any flooding issues, has there, Paul? So no, they haven't had any flooding issues associated with those high snowfall years, so we expect that condition to remain the same.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think the lake itself is significantly lower than the rest of the bog, so it would have to come up six feet or so in order to flood any of the surrounding residential properties. And as you look at Conners Lake over the, if you go back and review aerials for the last 20 or 30 years, you'll see that that lake has shrunk considerably. So it's actually operating in a negative hydrologic regime right now and slowly drying up, so anything we can do to help that's going to be a positive thing.
Commissioner Polis, through the chair. You know, I do believe that there's possibility of expanded snow storage there. Like, as I mentioned, all the streets that we're working on with PMNE, when we build these complete streets like Spinard, you know, we're taking a corridor, maybe doing a road diet, and adding all these other features for sidewalks, bike lanes, you know, increased pedestrian amenities. So when we do that, we have less snow storage opportunities remaining in the corridor that does put more pressure for snow storage. So as I mentioned, the more that Anchorage becomes a more urbanized city, you know, the snow's got to go somewhere, you know, and we get a lot of increased interest from bike Anchorage, from walkers, all modes of transportation, of desiring increased snow removal. So it's, you know, it's part of the equation, it's just got to go somewhere. But that is part of what we have factored into the site, is, you know, something to meet near-term and some future as well.
Okay, looks like we've dried up with commission questions for the moment. I don't know if anyone out here is not part of the project team and wishing to speak as an individual, but we'll open up the floor to the public, if anyone likes to come forward. Okay, seeing no one, we've got nine minutes left. If you want to make any final comments for rebuttal.
Lori can always help me as I go through this. Okay, so formally, my rebuttal notes, again, I'm Melinda Tsu with Project Management and Engineering, and thank you all to the commissioners through the chair. And thank you all to the commissioners through the chair. You know, first and foremost, it's just the importance of this project. This is a central facility that serves one of the largest snow areas for hauling in Anchorage. And as I mentioned, you know, again, I use the word urbanized as Anchorage desires, you know, complete streets and walkable, bikeable, you know, transportation, multimodal use. It does increase more pressure on the need to haul the snow and bring it to a snow storage area. This is a project that's been going on for many years. This isn't just something that's happened in the last five years or three years that we've been all working on it. The MOA has been looking for a permanent snow storage area for West Anchorage for decades. I've been with the municipality for about 17 years. And I know when I came onboard, I was over at AWU. There was a lot of conversation of land trades, land swap, what can we do? But the ultimate goal was to find a permanent solution. We don't want to be, have something so essential being left to, oh gosh, you know, your lease is up and now we have a new use and we're kicked off. So it's that important to all of us and for the residents for providing safe, accessible roadways and to all users. So going back to the details of adopted planning documents, you know, back in the adopted Anchorage 2020 plan, there were five new snow disposal sites identified to be needed within that 2020 timeframe. And it did cite one additional to be located near the airport. And then going back into the detail of the district plan, West Anchorage District Plan in 2012, it identified the need to secure not only the existing Northwood site, but to add an additional site in West Anchorage. The issues that we've had as a project team, and it's been challenging, is it was never identified where exactly were those sites to be. And it was unfortunately that we couldn't secure the existing Northwood site. We do need the flexibility for the parcel. As I mentioned, you know, I do recommend not putting any conditions on the remaining unused site, 10 acres of that 32-acre parcel. If there would be a need for future expansion, we would rely on the public and the planning process to serve the best interest of the public. When the parcel was rezoned, there was the special limitations put on it that it would only be used for either snow storage or to remain as open space. So I think that's a clear indication of, you know, the public's interest, and we feel the same way. We don't want to necessarily use all of it just because it's there. We're trying to preserve as much natural space. But we still feel that, you know, down the road, down the future, it might be another generation when Paul and all of us are retired. But let's leave it to that planning process to determine if that's still the best location for expansion. It may not be. So, and they still would have to go back to this body for a conditional use permit for an expansion and also satisfy all the different permitting agencies, including the Core, to prove that it's the least environmentally damaging practicable alternative. So we will continue our stakeholder coordination. This is something that, you know, we've taken a very close team approach and going back to the public with many different opportunities to get their input and also our internal stakeholders as well. So for the next phase of our 95% phase, we'll continue our public involvement process and communicate our design with the community councils, the park users, and the property owners. And that will be continued with street maintenance. We've worked very, very closely with Paul. He's been to almost all of our meetings all through this, throughout this design process as we finalize the design with maintenance practicality in mind. And we'll continue to work with Parks and Rec. As I mentioned, that we've included both the superintendent and Tom and Steve along the way. And we'll figure out what the best trail alignment is with their expert guidance. But we've also, you know, through the public process, have heard the different comments, especially from Turnagain Community Council and their Land Use Committee. And we've shared all of that information to Parks and Rec as far as their interest in dedicating additional parkland of the undedicated park parcels. They're very aware of that and, you know, ready to discuss it in the future. But we feel that it's something that can be handled outside of this case specifically. We will continue working with Watershed Management Services. As Lori mentioned before, we've talked with them throughout the design process. They've been satisfied with our design to date. And we'll continue working with them and seek their guidance on determining any special requirements for their facility stormwater pollution prevention plan. Overall, it's been a challenging project, something that it's been tough for all of us, for the residents. What do you do when you know there's this need? And where are you going to come up with a upland site that's large enough and available to use? So it has been challenging. We recognize that, you know, it's not our first choice to be building something in the wetlands. But the site process alone took over a year to complete with very many multiple permitting steps. But we have confidence that this site, as we're sharing in the site plan, is the best viable site for the reasons, some of the things that are very important to us. This site allows for 24/7 operations, and that's very important to Paul. That's his number one criteria, and that it's large enough. You know, he has to have a, their crews have to have a site that is, allows, you know, limited impacts to residential so that there wouldn't be any nighttime or hourly restrictions because they have to haul it many times all throughout the day or night during the winter. The site is large enough for the foreseeable future and that has a capacity for water quality treatment features and receive large volumes of snow melt water. It's, the other thing that's important is that this site was centrally located for West Anchorage service areas for cost-efficient hauling operations. You know, we have a limited budget and it's always a conversation on, you know, any additional haul time or distances put additional strain on that budget. This site minimized wetland impact by utilizing that existing route through street maintenance club station. So there's very, you know, hardly new impacts on this haul route as Lori mentioned in her presentation. We also consider the context of Connors Park, and we want to foster that natural aesthetic with irregular shaped berms, not, you know, square, rectilinear shapes, and maintaining the mature vegetation and incorporating a trail. And, you know, mostly, we have assurance from street maintenance that they will provide, properly maintain the site that's located to their existing main headquarters next to Connors Bog Park. A good testament to this is that they've been successfully operating the existing site for decades without public complaint, and that they have been very good neighbors to the parkland. So with that, I want to just respectfully request approval of our conditional use permits for this essential municipal facility. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And what's the will of the body? Oh, look at this. Commissioner Spinelli.
I move in the case 2022-0099 to approve the conditional use for land reclamation subject to the conditions one and two shown on page 11 of the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Spinelli, for your motion, seconded by Commissioner Paulus. Commissioner Spinelli, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. I intend to support the motion. I was on the commission previously when this came before us, and it seems like we've come a long way, and I think they have a plan that'll work, so I tend to support.
Commissioner Paulus, I can't, okay.
I'll just add some findings that it meets the conditional use requirements. It meets the conditional use standards for land reclamation. It has a pretty positive project support along the way from the Spinard Lake Community Council, the Assembly, the UDC. I think we heard, we got an email today about the Turnigan Community Council's recommendations, but they can handle the planning for the Connors Bog in the future and just has a long history of planning actions and previous approvals. So it's a well-supported project.
Okay, seeing nothing further, we'll go ahead and call a vote.
Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I thought I was in the queue to speak before we got to a vote. Obviously, we're past that now. I'll cast my vote and share my comments later.
Okay, we do have another case as well. I don't know where your comments were most relevant or pointed towards.
They're most relevant to this case. For the record, I would like to get something out if, I'm just not sure the best way to do it now that we're already in the vote.
I think it's, I guess, I don't have an issue with providing additional comments since we haven't completed the voting yet. If you have a comment you'd like to provide.
Thank you, Commission, for entertaining this, and apologies for, says member with the floor, Jeff Ron. There I am. On staff packet, page five, item four, staff indicates that the standard is met. I'm just, while I can come to the same conclusion and ultimately support approval of the motion, I'm really struggling with staff's approach to that and indicating no mitigation is needed to address land reclamation, which is time-limited use of the property. In total, I understand that the land reclamation isn't the ultimate use. It's temporary, but we heard from the applicant, and luckily, you know, I read through their packet, they talk about all sorts of reclamation, excuse me, all sorts of mitigation for that phase. And so I think it would behoove us as a commission to recognize that even though it is a temporary activity, there will be impacts, and those impacts have been assessed and, to the extent possible, will be mitigated during that phase. So thank you for entertaining those comments.
We thank you, Commissioner Ron, for those additional comments. That motion passes with seven votes in favor and none opposed, leaving one remaining case on the agenda. Commissioner Paulus?
I move in case 2022-0100, the amendment to a conditional use for a snow disposal site subject to conditions one through seven shown on page 12 of the staff report.
Seconded by Commissioner Strick. Commissioner Paulus, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I intend to support the motion. I think it meets the conditional use requirements. From what I heard, public opposition comments were pretty much related to hydrologic and trail concerns, which seemed to have been approved, addressed by the proposed site plan. Again, lots of positive support from the Sand Lake Community Council, UDC, and Assembly in pass to get this project to this point. And it also, again, has a long history of planning activities and previous approvals. So I support the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Paulus, for your comments. Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, a little more timely this time. I as well intend to support the motion. I'll try not to go too deep into any one area in my comments here, but do want to get a few things out for the record. Again, staff's approach to item number seven, reached a conclusion, no significant adverse impacts are anticipated. Similar to my last commentary on the previous case, I frankly don't agree with that conclusion. I do believe there will, in fact, be significant adverse impacts when looking at this particular site. That said, I believe that the petitioner and the presentation they've provided and the studies that they've done, again, look at those impacts and, to an extent, have attempted to address and do the best with the site conditions as they are to hopefully lessen the impact and improve conditions to the extent feasible within the bog in total. This is a very special place. Connors Bog has a special place in my heart. My first few years in Anchorage, you know, I was resident in the area and walked there frequently. I know lots of people in Anchorage have a similar association with it. But by golly, we keep doing everything we possibly can to cut off this special place and area. You know, the Corps of Engineers has determined that it's not a jurisdictional wetland because we've eliminated all the natural hydrologic connection to this place. And yet it continues to subsist in some way and provide some functions and values as habitat for wildlife and recreational space for people in Anchorage. I do hope that the design as planned works out successfully. But here we are again, trading, you know, one value for another. So with that, I'll close.
Okay, seeing no one further, we'll go ahead and call the vote.
Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, seven votes in favor, no votes opposed. That motion passes. Looking at this point for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Commissioner Strick, seconded by Commissioner Paulus, seeing no objection. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.